We will call to order the Bryant Planning Commission meeting of March 10th, 2025. Have a roll call.
Hooton?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Dutton?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Irwin?
Carter.
Speed?
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
Penfield?
Here.
We have 100% attendance and a quorum.
Wow. That's good.
We'll be in our meeting.
Been a long time coming.
Have, I have really no announcements other than Ms. Terry Thompson is our new planning commission member. Well, we have a short meeting tonight, don't get used to it. It's fairly short, two items. From Ward?
Two.
Two, okay, I get confused.
I believe, Terry, you've lived there approximately, what, 22 years?
Yeah, 20, 23 years, actually.
What street?
We're glad to have you, Terry, and we'll kind of help guide you along.
She might want to be after today.
And just, we have next our DRC report, which our vice chair will read, Andrea Hooton. But typically, we have items at DRC, it meets every two weeks, usually twice a month, preliminary reviews of, of the plats and the items that come up here. There are certain items that DRC can approve, and then, so all the DRC items are read for information purposes to the planning commission and the public at this meeting. So, Andrea?
Okay. So, we have only two, and they're both signed permits by Arkansas Sana Neon. The first one is 501 Prince at 307 Bryant Avenue, and that was approved by the staff. And then Little Caesar's, 1315 North Reynolds Road, that was approved, so that's it.
All right. We, oh, I'm sorry, I brushed right over Colton or Ted. Do y'all have any announcements? I did the Terry announcement.
Oh, you have minutes, too.
Got a little minutes, too.
I'm gonna get there, I'm backing back.
You did well, because we were gonna announce Terry as being the new commissioner. You took care of that, thank you very much. Unless Terry would like to say a few words?
Glad to be here, serving my city, to make it a better place to live for everyone.
Tell us about yourself.
Well, my brother and I own Thompson Electric. We've been in business for 42 years. He and I have owned it for about 22 years. Our dad started it with a business partner. We did commercial electrical contracting all over the state, but mostly in central Arkansas. And I'm just, I'm an accountant, and so I have the, you know, a degree in accounting, and my brother is the electrician part of the, part of the partnership, so, I mean, we have 45 employees, so, anyway. It's great.
Good, great.
Glad to have you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, no other announcements. So, we do have minutes that were from the February 10th, 2025 meeting that you received in your packet.
I believe they'd be approved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we've done our minutes, our announcements, and our DRC report. We have no old business, so we will move right into our new business of the evening. Item four on the agenda, Hawkins Valley, Phase One, preliminary plat, Garnett Engineering requesting a preliminary plat approval. Mr. Vernon?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're gonna quiet up. This is pretty straightforward, I believe it's 32 lots. It's up kind of below Grace Village and kind of east of Spring Hill. We, the only thing that's kind of unusual about this one is we have 32 lots shown. DRC has put a limitation on us of, of only building 30 of those until we get a secondary entrance established. We mainly did that because we have so many options to develop a, a second entrance, and we're gonna kind of figure that out as we go. I think overall, this development is gonna have somewhere around 350 lots in it. I'll answer any other questions.
You know how many phases, or is that just unknown depending on how?
At least two. But, no, we really don't know.
Is the first thing's gonna be on the, both sides of the street?
On both sides of the street.
Where do you come in?
It's mainly straight ahead where you come in. We're, we're gonna come in off of Spring Hill, there's a, there's a out parcel that's outside of the subdivision, it's on the left, and then we kind of go into it, and we're mainly just developing that main street and a couple side streets off of it. We'll probably branch down those side streets when we do our future phases, but like I said, we haven't really established where we're going next. Just trying to get in there and get work and start selling some houses.
Where would you anticipate the second entrance being?
Well, we're gonna have a connection to Grace Village. One of the last road they put in touches our property. We own a little piece of commercial property north of us. Yeah, that, that timber area right there, I believe it is. No, wait, wait, wait. Can you turn the parcels on? We own this piece right here, and, and could get out in that direction. We also have a access easement in the southwest corner of our property. I think the GIS calls it Strawberry Lane. Like I said, we've got three really good options. We just don't know, you know?
Will there be two main entrances and exits when it's all done, or will there be?
Yeah, well, we, we, we are gonna establish a connection to Grace Village when it's all done. We are gonna have a connection to Spring Hill. And, and I, I didn't say this, but you guys approved the overall schematic design of this three, four months ago. We are gonna stub a road up to the north, but, you know, there's not gonna be a connection there. We've also coordinated with the city to stub two roads to the south. We have a collector that runs through the middle, that runs from Spring Hill kind of through the middle of our site. It's gonna exit our property, kind of center mass, pointing to the south.
How does your main entrance, how does it line up with Joyce? Is it, is it offset, am I remembering?
It's offset a little bit.
A little bit to the south?
You know, in a perfect world, we would've got it right on Joyce, but we really needed to offset it a little bit to the south to improve site distance on Spring Hill.
Okay.
There's, there's a curve a little bit north of us, and we really needed to get as far away from that curve as we could for site distance. I do think that the, the traffic that's going west is gonna be looking eye to eye with the, the traffic that's going east on Joyce, so you still should get the safety, or most of the safety that would go along with, with being, you know, right on top of each other.
I think we had a neighbor that, on Joyce, that was concerned about the
Right.
the streets and how they were gonna line up, and of course, the traffic, which. How many houses, how many houses total you think in this development will be?
It's, it's very close to 350.
It's a lot of traffic on Spring Hill then, isn't it?
Does the city have a plan to do something about Spring Hill Road? I mean, we've, we've discussed this multiple times, but.
Yes, we have. And in fact, we'll probably talk about that in the comprehensive growth plan, since we're also looking at future funding sources, and Spring Hill Road, why it was one of the very first ones on the list.
I had a question on the, the managed growth, G3, as part of the comprehensive plan, which is what this, this would be in.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. I don't know what you're doing.
I've got, actually, I've got it.
Okay.
It's, you're right here.
Uh huh.
So, where are you? Spring Hill, I think you're right there.
Okay.
Anyway, you're in the G3 managed growth, and it says it's low density residential, and it's three units per acre max. So, I'm just wondering how this is gonna play out, and I know we might have a change of plans, but for right now, this is what we're dealing with, and I'd like to know how it fits within this G3, or how you're thinking about that.
I know the, the plan, the, the overall development plan that showed the 350 acres, you guys approved it three or four months ago.
I think so.
And, but I don't remember an acreage, a limit of three per acre on the.
Go figure, I'll throw it though. You?
Yeah, I'll pull it up.
I looked at the one online, it looks like it was the same one I had, but.
Yeah, that's the property right here.
Yeah, that's right.
Sorry, I don't have the map today.
How many acres do you have total? Wait, you know, how many?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three.
That includes about four and a half acres of the market.
So, that's, that's about four, a little over four per acre?
That's with the 350 that you're calculating?
It's eighty-some acres, yes. Four times.
Which one is it? The G3?
G3, three units.
Low density mixed use.
How long ago is this comprehensive growth plan done?
The, the one that we have on record is somewhere between 2010 and 2012. That's why we're in the process of, we'll have that conversation.
We have to dive by what it is now, right?
It's the roadmap.
Right.
As far as this phase here, does it comply with the three lots per acre, or is it even more, is it still four lots per acre in the picture compared?
I'd have to look at the, the plat if, you know, we, we just have to look at, at how much acreage is, is on that. The legal for that is over here.
I didn't see it anywhere, but, you know.
How big, what's the average size per lot?
Uh, it's.
Eight thousand?
Eighty, or wait, that's sixty by, by 110, so that, what's that, a little over?
Six thousand, six hundred.
So, that's 8.17 acres, we have 32, is that four, four per acre?
You said three per acre, is what our copper's plan said?
Right.
So, Mr. Chairman, are we saying that we approve this, we're going out of code?
It's, it's not a code, it's a guideline.
It's not a code. It's not a code. It's a guideline. We're gonna go back to comprehensive. We're going outside of that comprehensive.
Which is our, you know, based on our public hearing, what we, we had public hearings in the past to plan for the areas that are in the ETJ, extraterritorial planning jurisdiction, which are outside of the city, and even inside the city, you know, based on public comment, city council, member comment, planning commission comment, developer comment, you know, those plans were developed. We've been talking for two years about updating the plan
Yep.
and, and changing it based on growth. And typically, we use it for zoning, uh, uh, direction. If we're going in a direction with a piece of property that, you know, is even in the city, and it doesn't meet the plan, and they're wanting to bring it to the plan, typically we, you know, use that for our, our pathway to get to that zone, if that makes sense.
What is the zoning for this? Is it R1S?
The counties would be R1A.
But it's gonna be, it's pre-annex, so when it comes in, what would it be? Would it automatically be an R1S?
It would, yeah, so that's what they're building it to, the R1s facts, or R1S facts. So, we'd come in as an R1S property. The code, or the comprehensive plan does outline the zonings that were, or forget the wording on it, but it's on the back of the plan there. It talks about the applicable zonings for those different districts, and it does have R1S as a, one of those for that G3 area.
And right now, the developer decides on whether it's gonna be R1, it's not ever rezoned, or they just decide on what zoning it's gonna be?
Yeah, we don't maintain the zoning outside of the city limits.
But it comes in, it has to fall within a zoning?
Yes, yeah, of course.
How long before it falls into our city?
Yeah, we have to be contiguous with it, and there's a large tract to lay in between them, and it's kind of a contiguous city limits.
Could be a row then.
It could be R2 as well.
It could be R2 as well.
Right.
The rub, I mean, am I misremembering?
The whole plan was approved, and we got the, the work and the, and the collector, yeah.
Yeah, but I, I wasn't there at that meeting, I believe I was in November.
Those, those were the three things we got done that night.
And for clarity, and I don't, if you look at G2, G3, G4, a lot of the three units per acre max is for the mixed use class. I mean, that's why on the, the comprehensive plan, it specified the zonings that you can have in there, and that, that designation is more, because, I mean, you go to G4 and you're 10 units per acre.
Right.
So, it's getting to where you can do more dense apartments, or live works, or items like that. I don't think that applies to the residential subdivision, single family stuff, because it was specified in the plan to be zoned for either R1S or R2. Is that correct, Colton?
Or C, also C.
C1.
C1, yeah. But there's a comma after, you know, rural residential, low, low density residential, then mixed use three per acre maximum. I think that was to create areas that didn't have a lot of apartment density, you know?
I don't know that it's just attached to mixed use though, Lance. I, I can interpret it that way, because it's a separate line.
Medium density residential, then comma, mixed use 10 units per acre wouldn't apply to any subdivision.
Well, that, you're talking about G4, right?
Yeah, but it's, it's laid out the same format under G3. It's talking about mixed use three units per acre, and then mixed use 10 units per acre. And I can't imagine a single family.
So, you say there's so many per acre?
Are you implying that it is for mixed use?
It says mixed use has a comma after medium dense, well, low density residential has
a comma, and then mixed use three units per acre.
See it.
But if you go to G4, medium density residential, comma, mixed use 10 units per acre.
What's the yellow color?
I don't.
Yellow is the, darker yellow's the G1.
But in the plan, if it calls for the.
And G1 is the urban reserve, one unit per acre max.
And G4, where's the nearest G4? Was there G4 to the? You got a microphone over there?
I don't have a microphone on me. Uh, near G4 is right here.
Why is that G4?
That was before my time, so I'm not sure what that was, why they.
Is that, that's further north than where he is?
Yeah.
Why did that spot become G4?
Didn't even know I was G3.
Now you know.
I think at the time, and I'm going from memory, those, the N and the R, the nodes that are on there were to be commercial nodes
Mm-hmm.
for the purpose of getting sewer and water, and we were reg, at that time, you know, we've not allowed commercial zoning between those nodes historically because of the traffic on Spring Hill Road and everything. And I'm going from memory, and it's a long time ago, 10 through 12, but the nodes were created, and the thought process on the master street plan, if the, the arteries, arterials are put in place, that the higher density would be at those nodes as far as commercial and mixed use type things.
It actually shows a proposed fire station there where it's.
We do have one in the area that pretty much nullifies that, and that's another reason up there for the plan.
Yeah, and that was done after this plan, and so another reason to revise it.
Yep, yes, sir.
But, because we did look at the time for a fire station location at that location, and it wound up being put on North Lake Road.
That's correct.
But I think, Rick, that's why the density, as I recall, was closer to the, what we're calling the commercial nodes, certain nodes, as far as planning goes. So, Colton, you said there was language, there was, I'm on the website, and I couldn't find the.
If you would just say, I'm pulling up the supplemental documentation for the comprehensive plan, and so I can let you know.
And typically, what we've done is, if it is different than the comprehensive plan in the past, we have revised, I mean, we've done one-on adjustments to the plan as far as commercial zoning and residential type zoning applications.
I only know I carried this forward four months ago, and you guys approved the, the number and quantity and size of lots I was doing. I've since carried it to the county. The county's approved that, and, and, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent, this is the first I've heard of this, so.
Well, it's first.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
And I'm not being argumentative, I'm just trying to give the.
No, I understand, I understand your point.
And the concept was approved through this, you know, what, basically, the concept of this density was approved here by us.
But that's the reason why we go through so many different levels, is it so we have an opportunity to catch things like this?
Right.
Well, but, and I might, but you approved the concept, and they go higher engineering, which is very expensive. It should've been, should've, if, if it was gonna be any different, it should've been called at a DRC or our level as far as the number of units.
Sometimes those are kind of thrust on us, you know, like quickly, and we don't have time to research and evaluate, so.
That's right.
I dug in a little bit more on this one. I'm just nervous about all the traffic on Spring Hill with, especially with 350 lots.
Amen.
Absolutely.
So, that's, that's why I'm bringing this up.
Because right now, the widening, that would be, would be very minimum, minimum, based on what they're showing.
And at minimum, you're looking at adding 700 cars with 350 lots.
Very potential, yes.
Yeah.
Also, the widening, I guess you're just doing Phase One, it's 34 homes, 32 homes.
Yeah, just be the front there.
Yep, and then, you know, as far as widening is concerned on Spring Hill Road, it'd be quite a while before we got there with the extra.
The question I've asked myself is, do we shut down all growth along that quarter until?
We widen.
until we widen it, and how long would that be before we could allow any growth in that area?
I would tell you that we expect this to be a 10 or 12-year build-out to get to 300 lots. We, we don't plan on being back with a Phase Two of this for a year. And, you know, we have done a good job in, in working very closely with DRC on how we planned our streets for this. Most subdivisions that you have aren't putting traffic off of their site in three directions like we are. We, we aren't really going off to the east, but I wouldn't think that those folks to the east of that, us that all live on cul-de-sac streets want us going into their neighborhoods, you know, and.
But at the end of the day, they're all gonna end up on Spring Hill Road.
Yeah.
Well, I think a lot of them are gonna go out to.
They'll talk to the south of us.
Some of them go to Hilltop, a lot of them will go a little off the back way.
Yeah, you probably have a potential pathway, people driving into Bryant as well, doing a little lot on the north side of Spring Hill Road.
Yeah.
But like I said, this is gonna be six, seven years earliest probably to finish everything.
Right.
And, and maybe longer, depending on the market.
So, and Joe, just to comment on your, one of your comments, and we can't really, because of ordinances and plans, shut down growth
Right.
without doing a moratorium through the city council based on that road.
Right.
Which would be a different process, basically.
Well, I wasn't saying literally, I'm just saying with our problems here, what is our directive as we, because this, this traffic on Spring Hill Road is gonna continue?
We, we tip, we hold public hearings to set these plans.
Right.
And we hold to the plan, basically.
Right.
And as long as, as, I mean, if there's language in the plan that allows them to do it or not do it, I mean, that's typically what we have to do, whether it be the comprehensive plan or subdivision code ordinances or anything else. I mean, good, bad, or indifferent, as a property owner, this is outside the city, and I'm talking typically inside the city with our plans right now. I mean, if it's zoned R2, or R1, or C2, or C3, whatever it is, they have by right the right to do it as long as they adhere to all the ordinances and specifications of that. as long as they adhere to all the ordinances and specifications of that particular zoning. And when we get outside the city, and it's basically our comprehensive plan is that roadmap. It's not a zoning map, but it is our roadmap to allow that.
I personally, you know, I got the lever, and I'm sensitive, I want to be sensitive to traffic, but it does raise the question, do we always say no? When we have an opportunity to say no, we don't in some cases. But if we have an opportunity to say no, you know, that's, that's, or yes, depending on what we feel about traffic. It's not a done deal right now. I mean, it's not, and if someone could say it's three years from now, that'd be a different ballgame, but we don't know that.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of folks that care about traffic in Bryant right now. You guys have an RFQ for a street maintenance plan out right now. Later this month, you guys are doing an RFQ for a master street plan. And, I mean, we all need to come together as citizens of Bryant to make those plans as good as we can.
You're kind of stealing my thunder a little bit.
I'm sorry. But that plan is bigger than this subdivision. And this subdivision can't fix all the sins of the last 20 years. We can, you know, work hard on the future. Spring Hill Road definitely needs to be widened. And I would tell you that looking to individual subdivisions like this as a pathway to fix that is not, it's the way it's been done forever here, and it does not work. You're just putting infrastructure out there that's going to have to be jerked out and replaced when the real solution comes through.
If I may, can I read a section of our supplemental documentation for you guys? So it is talking about the land use elements of the plan utilize a non-traditional approach to land use classification called growth sectors. When using these sector classifications for land use decisions, one should focus primarily on the development's character and density. Proposals should be evaluated on how they are affecting neighboring development and compatibility with surroundings. However, compatibility should not be the overarching basis for decisions, as consideration should be given to the long-term effects and benefits of development as well. The, and then I also have this right here, this is the, we were talking about traffic on Spring Hill Road. These are actually the average daily traffic counts that RDOT put out for the city. It's really hard to see on this map. This right here is Spring Hill Road, and that is Spring Hill Elementary at the corner of North Lake Road. This right here, that's 10,000 average vehicle counts a day at that intersection of North Lake and Spring Hill. However, if you go on up north past Hildale and Springdale Road, that number drops down to 3,500 average vehicle counts per day. And that would be kind of right in that, the area of where this development would be. There's Pampore Way intersecting Spring Hill Road right there. So that's 3,500, but further south you get, you know, that number multiplies, you know, it increases doubles. But that's taken into account the counts from the areas off of North Lake and Hiltop and Hildale.
Yeah, but we have Bantley and Bryant in that area.
Yeah, that's, that's more, yeah, to your Bryant. At that far out, there's not as many vehicles on that section of Spring Hill Road. It's more of the traffic that's in the Bryant city limits and surrounding areas that come in down Spring Hill Road.
That's that 10K per day we're talking about.
Yes.
And it's because that intersection, people go all three directions from there. When I roll through there, I'm just as likely to turn left as go straight or go right at that intersection.
And then it's not until you get closer to the intersection of Highway 5 and Spring Hill Road that increases to 15,000. So you see a lot of cross-traffic through there.
Changes the subject. What do you, what do you do about sewer? Are we close to a sewer line?
You guys have gravity sewer out there, we're connecting to it. We are extending a main through our property. It's bigger than what we need to allow that sewer to continue on north in Distillane County, let you guys grow further to the north.
We are on the sewer, or will be a city sewer?
They'll be on our sewer.
Well, I know that, but like Pfizer built one, and it was his.
This will be long, they'll be long gravity, that will become our city sewer.
Okay. So we have capacity to handle that now?
Currently, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we're just approving a preliminary plan from the first phase, is all we're doing right now. So after that, we could say yes or no based on the next phase.
That's exactly right.
But it doesn't currently adhere to the current...
Correct.
I guess one would argue that since it's 83 acres and there's only 32 homes on it, it's even less dense than that, just the concentration of the housing around the road, rather than what part they're developing is higher than G3. But the overall property's still 83 acres.
And I don't, yeah, and my question, on the 83-acre concept, I don't remember, was there any green space on it?
There is, we were, another thing you guys approved while we were here, is you guys had a trail next to the collector, and we moved the trail to a green space that we're creating next to the creek there.
I mean, the requirement, the density requirement would be the overall track, including your green space, then you divide it out.
The whole 83 acres? I don't interpret it that way.
Well, as a development, your green space is spread, it's no different than like the midtown concept had, or overlay had green space. A PUD, even if it's done in phases, will have green space that's allocated. And I think you allow your sidewalks and your, I mean, and your landscape, and parks, and anything like that, your walkway paths, to be part of the green space. So your, your density requirement would be, the whole concept is 80 acres, you know, you can apply that, green space is part of that ratio. And you don't do it phase by phase, but it would be a requirement to have it all the way through.
But this, but they're developing a pattern here, the small homes collect pretty tight in. So I'm assuming that in Phase 2, or 3, or 4, that same pattern will develop, even though they will have green space. And I'm not sure, I mean, as it currently is, given the acreage that they're building on, it's not three per acre. Am I right?
Figure how many lots we're figuring 350?
It's about, it's about four per acre, if you look at the whole thing or this phase.
Okay, so the, and so it's four based on the 350 homes, you're saying?
But it's also four based on the 32 that we have here today.
It's averaging four.
And, you know, I'd still go back to, those are guidelines, those aren't a requirement, that's not a code.
Well, I, you know, I put a lot of weight in this.
Sure, yeah.
Because it was vetted, as Lance had said, with the community, they voted on it, we had input on it, so, yeah. It holds weight with me.
Well, and there's, there's cases to where we didn't adhere to it and turned someone down, I mean, and, I mean, had to reverse the decision. So typically, if we're going against the plan, to change it, whether it's a master street plan or the comprehensive plan, typically, the items brought in before to adjust the plan on a case-by-case basis, if that makes sense. And, you know, probably should have been done at the time of the concept, and I don't know. And I think at any point, it comes to DRC, I mean, I always ask, does it fit our comprehensive plan? About every meeting, I don't know yet.
I was going to say, the supplemental documentation also says, of course, that the comprehensive plan provides a general guideline for orderly growth and development. It is not meant to direct land use arrangement precisely, nor is it a zoning ordinance. It should serve as an instrument to blend public and private interest in a manner that will best suit the community. Citizens of business interest may look at the plan as a constitution for the city of Bryant. Unlike a national constitution, however, it may change more often to meet new challenges and growth issues. The plan will remain flexible, allowing for necessary modification of land uses. It will plot land usage areas according to long-term community needs, not short-term eventual gains. And then, let's see, that should be out there, yes. That was the main part, I wonder who did. So, that's in the, the first section there on that supplemental documentation, talking about the plan.
Thank you, Colton.
Lance, was the other meeting involving this a public hearing? Or was it, has there been a public hearing?
It was presented here as a concept.
It wasn't a public hearing, though.
No.
We changed the location of the trail in that meeting.
Well, not speaking about your development, the problem I have with the outside of the city limits, the developer decides on the zoning he wants. There's no public input, there's no public hearing. And this goes completely through with no public hearing ever?
We had, we had a public hearing at the county planning commission.
Okay. It's not a requirement of us. It's kind of like if I want to change my zoning inside the city limits, there's a public hearing. But if you're outside the city limits, the developer can decide on his zoning, public gets no input, unless it's on a county level.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we had a public hearing with the county.
And was it advertising all that, just like...
The notification process with the county's different than yours, but we notified the public.
So the public's had to change their requirements, yeah. How many people were there?
I was at Little Rock Planning Commission that night. One of my staff was at, was at the county planning commission.
I was there, there was quite a few people there. I don't believe there was anybody there to speak about this particular item, though. There was other items on the agenda that night.
Thank you, Colton.
I mean, the process has been, to answer, kind of to comment about Rick's statement, is, I mean, we do hold public hearings for reaching, we're about to begin the steps to revise our comprehensive plan. No, I've stated it before with the public in other subdivisions, that that comprehensive plan, it's not our zoning for the county, but it's our roadmap for development to the county. You know, again, shame on us for not revising it since 2012?
10.
10. Been preaching about it for years, but anyway, we're going to get it done. You know, that's the public's opportunity at that time to come give input on that plan.
Right.
And then, you know, the applicant does have the right out in that area to request any zoning that typically fits that plan, is probably how it goes, whether it's commercial or residential. I know it's...
If it doesn't fit that plan, though, we're not obligated to change our comprehensive growth plan for that. Like, do we need to change our comprehensive growth plan for this?
I would say no. I mean, we're, the R1S is one of the listed zonings for this growth area.
I think the code gives us the right to adjust and use it as a guide, kind of like the broad brushstrokes of the roads and where they go through the different properties at. It's up to the planning commission, basically.
Would you be willing to go R2?
After, after I've been start over?
I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
I feel like it'd be pretty punitive for me to come here, get an overall approval on my development, and then, before my developers spent $60,000 with me, and then come back and have to do it over again. I think that'd be pretty punitive.
What's your total acres?
We're 17.
No, total in the whole...
Oh, it's 83, 84 is what Lisa did.
So he'd have to drop it back to about 250 houses to be able to match the three, the density that we have on this.
I think Lance is right, this should have been done at the previous, if we were going to do it, it's kind of, it's kind of puts a big burden on the, I mean, a natural burden on the developer.
Let me ask this question, though. If we make an exception now, and we do what they're asking, what about the next time, and the next time, and the next time? And then we're not following our rules, not following our rules, not following, so then what's the point of having rules?
I mean, if the zoning matches one of the uses for the G3, how are you not following your rules?
It's not three per acre.
But, I mean, when, when, when he read off the back language for that, I mean, he, I think he read that carefully, it clearly states that those are guidelines, that this isn't a code, this isn't ADA, this isn't the fire code. I mean, these are guidelines for development. And, and...
But it's, it's a benefit to society as a whole, I heard that in there, and I'm not sure this would.
A lot of language to protect us.
I mean, but lots have gotten smaller in the last 13 years.
Colton, does it say R1 in that, in that document?
It lists out what's kind of shown there on that comprehensive plan, that itself. It says appropriate zoning, R1, R2, and C1. General uses low-density residential, neighborhood, commercial, office, home occupations. Let's see, density, three units per acre, per gross acre, maximum, minimum approximately quarter-acre lots. Utility requirements, sewer and water service intended for medium lot residence, look, sorry. Sector intended for medium lot residential uses with an orderly mix of appropriate commercial uses. Commercial uses are intended to be close proximity to and at the outer edge of residential neighborhoods. This area corresponds to the traditional low-density subversion with additional commercial components. Mixed uses strongly discouraged, and residential development should consist of apparently single-family homes with limited number of two-family homes.
The only time it mentions R1 was in which section?
Under the appropriate zoning. For G, C, for G2, it lists R1S, R2, C1. For G3, it lists R1, R2, and C1.
So, why would it, why would it differentiate between R1 and R1S?
R1 and R1S is the same square footage size.
I think it's because R1 allows for single-family and duplexes, whereas R1S is just single-family homes.
Right, but it's, so under G3, it said R1S?
It says R1 under...
That allows you to do duplexes.
Did we have an R1S when this came out? Colton, was R1S, when did we develop that zoning? It wasn't out when this company has it came through, was it?
I believe it was, it was sold around that time, around 2010.
I wasn't sure. I don't know.
That was a good bit before I got here.
A little before I did too, but...
So it's a little contradictory, and it's saying R1S, but it's saying three units per acre, correct?
They didn't say R1S, did they?
Is it right here in this one?
For G3, it says R1S, R2, or C1.
What did you say about lot size? What was that you were saying about lot size? These are more of an acre than acre.
You just have to...
Where are the, what are the, four of them? No, no. No, because you were including the streets and all that. Lots are 6,000 square feet. Quarter of an acre would be about 12, 13,000.
I don't know if those lots are small enough.
I think one thing that's happened since this plan was put into place, another reason it should have been, is our lot, our zoning has changed lot sizes too. I mean, I don't remember, we changed our zoning code, wasn't it in 17, 16, or 17? It was sometime, we changed our subdivision regs, and the lot minimums were lowered, which created more density, which this is probably in conflict with that because of the...
Another good opportunity to fix it.
Was there any, I wonder if there's any language in those ordinances that referred back to our comprehensive plan? I don't recall.
We have to do some research.
So instead of voting one way or the other, maybe we should table it, just to be able to, you know, just, I mean, just a suggestion, just asking the question, because I don't, I want Varden to be able to get what he wants, and I want us to make sure that we're all in compliance and that we're doing the correct thing.
I would suggest another path. I mean, I think the more reasonable path, from my perspective, is that we go back and study it and figure out what we want to do. And if you guys want to lower the density, that we do that with the other phase. And if you guys want to lower the density, that we do that by, with the other phases that we're gonna do, to get to whatever target density we decide on.
To get the three per acre, for instance, or?
Yeah, I mean, and, and we study that closely, but we're way, we're way down for it.
Adjust more green space? Well, I think one thing, we have to, it's gonna be hard to take a vote with the conflict and the misunder, misinterpretation of this plan and what's there. I mean, if anything, we need some clarity. I mean, it, it came to a DRC, several DRCs, and we've moved forward with a comprehensive, you know, assuming it fit the comprehensive plan. It's been presented to this commission as a concept, and it was approved as a concept based on that density level. I mean, there was a vote, it might not have been a public hearing, but there was a vote by this, uh, group to approve it as that concept, which I think you had all the lots shown on that, didn't you?
We did, yeah.
And, and we, you agreed to put a trail in it and move it.
We mutually agreed on where the trail should go. Your plan's called for a trail.
Wasn't there another concession you gave?
He increased the predatory sewer size for extended sewer offsite.
The, the, you know, the, the overall master street plan roads didn't really make sense, so again, we, we went in and mutually agreed on where we were gonna put the collector, what collector it was gonna be, you know, trying to make all these broad brushstroke decisions before we went to detailed design.
And I, I remember, I recall very vividly you saying, you came to get the concept before you spent the money on the plan to make sure the commission and the city was good with all of that.
But do we know, can we evaluate it really well at that point, though? I mean, to me, this is what this is for.
I agree.
Well, I think, I'm gonna disagree, because anything that's a concept, we should, before we send anybody out with any engineering or site plans that they're gonna spend money on, the concept should be where we look at the density requirements.
Then we need a, a point to do that.
So, so there was a mistake made somewhere, either internally with us or staff or something, 'cause we turned people loose, and I, I don't know, I'm guessing, but $50,000 bucks.
I mean, as the engineer, do you guys look at the comprehensive plan to see what zone it's in and things like that?
About that evaluation.
Yeah, I mean, we, I remember this coming up when we, we came to, to DRC, and, and the consensus was that we met the comprehensive plan. That's what, part of why I'm so shocked here.
No one looked at the units per acre, I guess. They just looked at whether it was R1S or?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, in this, in this case, I, this is just me speaking, I'm not speaking for the, the planning commission, but I think we own that decision that we made back then. It's unfair to bring him into a new decision that we already made early on, to make him go back to drawing. If he's willing to adapt the other phases closer to what we anticipate is the best layout for the number of, of homes, I think that's, that's fair.
I agree.
Just my two cents.
Can we, can we trust you to do that, Vernon?
I think what we all have to do is go back and collectively figure out what we think that that means.
I think we have a question from the developer.
I'm not cool with that. The reason I'm not cool with that is because of what we paid for that money. That's a very difficult piece of money. It's an incredibly expensive piece to develop. If I go in there and start giving up lots left and right, and people want bigger houses, it slows down everything.
I, I know, but I, I think you're over worrying this. I'd ask you to trust me on this.
I wanted to say that.
I know, I know, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think two things. I think Joe's right. I mean, you've, you've spent money on this phase, and we are where we are. And I think this phase, I, I think the, the application of the units per acre applies to the whole piece, and there could be a process to make that better. You know, maybe it's not 250 lots, maybe it's 325 lots. I don't know what that is. Maybe it's coming back with another concept that adjusts that a little bit and changes some of the, the units per acre in that concept. I do agree with Joe, we have to own what we did, based on the information that was brought to us from, you know, our plan, our staff, and our, our own insight at that time. I mean, anything.
So we have no right to question at this point?
We have a right to question. We should have questioned it at that point.
Well, we did.
It was on our, it was on our, it was on our agenda.
And this is a big deal. This is Spring Hill Road and all the development and all the traffic that's gonna be on that road. I just don't think we should dismiss it as, oh, well, we've already proved it to them.
We made a mistake, let's continue to make a mistake.
Right.
Well, I, I think everybody in this room needs to dig into this, you know, not in this setting, and, and figure out what that says, and, 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 and agree, so we can all, so I can design things right, and you guys can.
At this point, there's, there's, the interpretation of this plan, we need some legal opinion from our city attorney.
Yeah, I agree too.
I mean, with what's happened at DRC as far as the approvals and turning you loose with the approval here, and with the plan and the little contradictory statements, and as old as it is, I mean, I wouldn't feel good about a decision either way without our city attorney.
I think we do, yeah, we need legal advice at this, because it definitely opens up.
So I mean, I think, we never had an official motion, but I think we're gonna have to table it, to get that. We can talk about approving this one phase or not approving it, but it's all hinged together.
I would just ask that if, if, if your legal staff, you know, sides with my interpretation of what this is, which is that, that the R1S meets the G3, that, you know, that you might give us a special, you know?
I would be okay with that.
Yeah, I'm cool with that.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
If we can get Quorum to a meeting, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moving it be tabled until the information is procured.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We all know what the motion is. We're tabling any decision until legal review clarifies our position with this comprehensive plan, correct? Okay, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks.
Thank you.
With a consideration for a special meeting in favor.
Okay, a real question to you, sir.
Okay, next item on our agenda, item five, proposed RFQ for new comprehensive growth plan. Ted Taylor, review and approve, proceed an RFQ for a new comprehensive growth plan for the city.
I'm, I'm gonna back up on that and say that we don't necessarily want your, need your approval tonight. You may want an opportunity to review this. This is, in your package, you have the RFQ, which is a request for qualifications for that. There's some key points to look at, and these things, because one of them is the actual comprehensive growth plan, and the land use plan, which we've got, I guess we just got a pressure on that. And that's another good opportunity, because, Ted, Bill, I do remember there was a change in the zoning, that just took the call exactly where it does, that makes it out of the way. The way this process will work, as I said, is a request for qualifications. We will pass this by you, once you guys agree to do it. We will assemble a panel that will review these when they come in. As I said, on a panel of six, we probably will pull from two of y'all, some of staff, and some other, other personnel to review those. There'll be a rating system, based off how well they meet these requirements, as well as experience, and generally, overall, what, you know, what we are running in that, based off other comparison with other comprehensive growth plans. And at that point, we will negotiate a contract then, and then proceed to the council on, on awarding that contract, and hopefully begin sometime mid-May, mid to end May, with a chance that we can get this done by the end of the year. So, not asking for your approval as of tonight, I do ask that you, uh, review it, read it, and see if there's, if it meets your expectations. If you guys have any changes, feel free to contact Colton or myself, and we'll address those changes, uh, one at a time.
So Ted, based on our comprehensive plan now, how are we gonna make sure that this situation that came up tonight will not happen again?
Well, I mean, I think the argument is, is, I mean, I understand that the three units per acre doesn't fit with nothing within the R1S. So by that definition, I don't know if there's any growth plan out there that fits our R1S. So it almost looks like it makes one of our zoning classes completely illegal. So I don't think, I think we wanna make sure that our current zoning ordinances, based on efficiency, it does match with our R1S.
So this has been an hour.
I don't know.
And we ran out what? Best way to do it.
Correct, hopefully we'll be in sync. Also, we have other master plans that are working simultaneously. We have a water, wastewater master plan that this will soon be in. The way this works is wastewater master plan is always as well as that, so this will work hand in hand with that. As Vernon pointed out, and we discussed it about the master transportation plan, update that. It's still, I, I mean, the current walk, bike, drive, master transportation plan still is fitting, so I don't think there's gonna be substantial changes. So, but there, basically, we are also approached the county, as far as we, we make them aware that we're doing this, because I know they're just involved as part of that. There will be a public consultation process, where we will get people's involvement, including people within, our ETJ's involvement, to get their views on these as well. So it's an overall, it's gonna be a very long process. But it's, it's probably the reason we have put it off for 13, 14 years.
Sure.
So, this is basically to choose our vendor who's gonna develop the plan?
Yeah, well, it, like I said, it establishes rating, uh, parameters as far as selecting that one, and at that point, if you don't award, you basically start the negotiation of what that, the cost and what the actual scope of work is.
Yeah, and the, and the, as I was told many years ago, we don't have a budget, so the council approves all of that.
That's correct. And this is actually not within our current, uh, planning budget. This will be decided upon by council, and the funding mechanism is more likely to come out of the general fund.
But past, past, so past acquiring a vendor, approving a vendor and hiring them, then comes the work, we have our public, they develop a plan.
That's correct.
And then they present the plan to us as a commission. We work through that plan. We get, as a committee, typically, then we develop it as a commission, then we hold a public hearing at a stage where we have the public, the developers, the council, the commission, you know, all the stakeholders in the room, adjust it, massage it around, change it to fit the public's desire, as we've done in the past, and then work through the approval process to hold, to try to keep it from happening again, Jim.
Okay.
The, this holdout, as I recall, was the first time we ever had anything like that back then, because it was.
Who did it back then? Y'all remember?
Jim Monttunglin did it back then.
Okay.
And, uh, I forget the name of his.
Urban Planning Association.
And, um, good guy, but, you know, that was.
12 years ago.
12 years ago. And, you know, the zoning ordinances have changed. We've, I mean, we now have a C3, which probably isn't even addressed on that plan at all. So, I mean, it's definitely way past.
Well, Brian's changed, from the time we moved here 30 years ago.
Yeah.
And later, forever you.
So, I mean, well, the applicant's left, so that one project, we won't talk. So do you need an approval tonight, or?
If you want to approve, then we can proceed to advertise.
I, I read through it.
I think it's solid.
Yeah, I think they need to move this as fast as possible.
I agree.
Just beginning, it's clear, and the roadmap to the public, because that was the first roadmap to the developers, and it worked great at that time.
I just did wanna make the introduction that I showed, we showed you some for the first time, then called for you.
No, appreciate that.
Now, this, at this part of what you're doing, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the request for qualifications for our growth plan.
Second. So we have a motion and a second to approve it as written or as amended as needed to, you know, in a 30.
Are we gonna fill in the, uh?
Dates, yeah.
And when is that gonna be made?
Well, I mean, we can move it up and out as a result of, from the approval tonight. Basically, we need two weeks in a phase of publication of paper, in which case we may expect another two weeks to get any qualified applicants to, to symbol their proposal. And we, we have, uh, the ranking system, which we will send you, you know, once again, the, the overall idea is that we probably would pick two commissions to be on that. We have, we might, you know, use the mayor's selections as far as who to pick, and then probably another four staff. We were talking about, obviously, it's heavy in planning, Colton, myself, somebody from public works as well, because it has to work with the transportation plan, as well as water and wastewater, and other, and another department that might be fire and police, it might be parks, might be, I would, I mean, animal control could even have a piece of this as far as that.
And it's limited to six, is that what you said?
We, we like to keep it to a fault, you know, with small numbers. We don't wanna run the.
Yeah, I get that, yeah.
It's messy.
So, so we have a motion and a second, and I think, as our urgency expelled, you have the right to put the date in here as quickly as you can to get it moving.
SMP.
So, any other discussion on the motion or second, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, get it done. Get it done.
We will.
Because it's a long process, I mean, it's not gonna happen.
Well, the public involvement.
Andrew, I will send you an email once a week to see how it's done.
That'd be one of your motions, order. We'll read Jen. For a second, all in favor, aye.